Three, two, we're live.
Here we go, we're recording again.
We're back.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is approval of the voucher. And I don't think that we've received that yet, so we'll take it when it comes in the email.
Um, I just wanna just say on that, that, you know, because of operating remotely, some things get a little backlog, but we're moving forward. And I want to thank the school committee again, and so any members of the public going, knowing that, you know, we do approve things electronically, but we've caught a few things that were unintentional, minor items that we've been able to reconcile. And that's because school committee, you know, through that, that review process catches some of those things. And then, again, they're minor items, they're not intentional, but that's why this process is important. So, and that will continue that through the summer. But if you ever have any questions on any voucher items, let us know. We can pull those or hold those or provide backup information. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So, the next item then is approval of the minutes from May 1st. And I think that I went in there and changed the title of them accidentally, so as long as Haley can fix that.
I thought it was a Hawaiian reference, but it's okay.
I didn't know what I was, I just clicked on it and it inserted some letters, so. If, uh, but other than that, is there a motion to approve them? Carrie?
I make a motion to approve them as written.
I'll second that. Okay, um, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
And I say aye, so, so moved?
Um, Madam Chair, I think you mentioned it, but for the, for the record, Darlene was not able to join us today, right? She's at a family.
Right, I did, I contacted her and she said she wasn't able to join us.
Thank you. I'm not aware of any public comment, Selena has not alerted me, but again, as in past meetings, any public comment we receive, we will provide it to the board and read it into the record at a subsequent meeting.
Okay, very good. Reports and updates, the first report we have is a principal report.
Um, I have mostly been focused on wrapping up the school year and graduation. So, the teachers have finished their, you know, today's our last day of instruction, and we will be holding graduation tonight. Next week, we will have parent-teacher conversations by phone or Zoom or whatever method the parents choose. And then they'll be getting learning summary letters in lieu of our traditional report cards that will just share, you know, what the students have worked on during the second semester, you know, sort of encompassing both prior to remote learning and during the remote learning, just some key, you know, information to share with them, and that will go in their records. Um, and, yeah, I mean, oh, and then, um, they've resumed work at Longfellow, which I think you guys saw via email, and they actually are pretty much finished. They're just, now it's over to the lift. Um, people, Mark probably knows more about that. Um, but, yeah, I think if there's any questions, I can answer them. But I think there'll be, you know, more to work on after this meeting.
So, well, everybody's muted except for me. Everyone's muted.
I'm sorry. Does anybody have questions for Haley? Just update.
Yes, um, I, I wanna make sure that, I know Amy has been included. I forwarded some messages, so forgive me because there's been a lot of traffic back and forth. But I think the only thing we're waiting on is, and jump in if I misspeak Haley, there was a dumpster there that was part of the construction and retrofit and rehab. I want the community to know, I wanna give a shout out to Main Accessibility Corporation and Holyoke Builders. They've worked with us. I don't want anybody to read anything into the fact that we're not totally done yet. It's been a function of, of the Corona impact to all communities and the safety of the island. Um, but we are wrapping that up. It, we're just waiting on some minor pieces to be buttoned up, if you will. Removal of the, of the dumpster, making sure that final electrical components. And it was, it was really a function of having accessibility both to a barge and those pieces. So, as soon as that's wrapped up and as soon as we've done the, you know, the, the testing, I'll provide that update to the school committee. But as far, I don't have anything, any reason to believe that we're not on track and we won't be ready to go. Haley, did I misspeak on that? Okay. Amy, do you or Carrie have any questions about that? Anything, there'll be a full reconciliation when, we've been paying the bills as they come in, the invoices. Again, this is money that the town approved for this retrofit. And I'm confident that all of the pieces have been and, and will be corrected and that you'll have a, a quality, a quality piece of equipment in good working order after this project is completed. Amy, if you have any questions, I can provide more follow-up from Main Accessibility or Holyoke. But I, I think I've copied you guys on those emails.
Yeah, the, the photo that Ingrid sent, that it looked like it was coming along well, so. Yeah, I, I don't, I think things are moving along. I know it's gonna be kinda slow.
Yeah, I don't want anybody to read into it, there's nothing wrong, it's just a function of, you know, I mean, you guys know better than anybody, you're an island. We have to be working with, with our contractors and vendors in terms of being able to get materials and, and things out there. So, we're, we're doing that, but they've been very cooperative and very attentive when we've reached out for updates. So, if, there are no red flags that I'm aware of.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Um, so, the discussion item is, the first discussion item is staffing proposal.
Yes, um, that, that is a proposal that our principal Haley came forward with unsolicited. I'm very proud of her, and I will say that the superintendent, I'm very, very, I'm very supportive. I'm cautiously supportive, only from the context of Haley's done a wonderful job for us. She's done a wonderful job as principal, she's an outstanding teacher. I just wanna make sure that we're, we keep in the forefront what is best for her, her family, and obviously the school and our children. So, um, I, I am fully supportive of the proposal she would like to present to the school committee. And I think there's also, within this proposal, a safety valve or a safety mechanism, should this, there be any concerns from anybody, first and foremost Haley, the board, parents, so. Haley, please.
Sure, so I shared the document with you. Um, do you want me to share my screen and sort of go over it? Do you wanna jump into questions? And hold on one second, I'm gonna stop the paneling.
Haley, I think, I think a narrative overview would be fine, and then the proposal should be included in the minutes. And then, if the school committee, if the school committee wants to consider this, then that could be shared with the public. But I think it's, it would be best to give the school committee an overview and let them entertain any questions. Because frankly, if the school committee's not supportive, it stops right there. But I would give a verbal, but that's up to Amy.
Okay, would you, yeah, would you see it, Amy?
Yes, an overview sounds like a good idea.
Okay, so, um, I'm just gonna pull it up for myself, so I can try to state it in like simplest terms. With everything with our school, there's a lot of logistics and juggling and intricacies. So, I tried to make the proposal as straightforward as possible, and even then, it was a lot to explain my thought process and thinking. Um, so, we have two currently in our budget and, right now, operating with two classroom teachers. Um, one who is responsible for K-4 and one who is responsible for 5'8". And we have a vacancy in the 5'8" position, which is budgeted at 100%. Um, so, one option is of course to hire a 100% classroom teacher for our middle-level students. Um, but as I've been thinking and thinking about this remote learning, and we also had been thinking, this spring, we had piloted before, before we went remote, we had piloted a few things, just kinda trying out, looking at like the best use of our human resources. We do have a small student body, but we have a large spread of grades. So, it's, it's kinda complicated. So, um, something that I'm thinking for this year, where there's a lot of uncertainties for the fall, and there's, there's a lot to bring on a new teacher into our community and introduce them to our school and our curriculum and all of that, like it's a very big process. And with all the uncertainty and with the turnover that we have had on the middle level the past two years, my proposal is to expand the teaching principal position to use a portion of that classroom position. So, um, my position right now is 40%, my proposal is to make it 80%, which would be four days of teaching. Um, special ed in the mornings, like I do now, and that would be delivered one-on-one like it is now. And then in the afternoon, it would be delivering core subjects to the middle schoolers. So, it would be serving that role as the general education teacher, but only like 40% of the pool. And then the second part of that would be adding a 20% science and social studies teacher. Um, and that would add some specialization for the middle level, which I think is really important at their age. And it would add, you know, just another staff person to be a part of the team and provide some, you know, consistency in what we've been doing. And so that brings us to 60% of that budgeted amount. And I think that in my proposal that I shared with you, I showed a sample schedule of how all those pieces could fit together with specials. And again, it's kind of a matrix, but everything would be covered, all the subjects would be covered, all the special education services would be covered. The kids would be provided that specialization in science and social studies. And there would be a lot of continuity from this year to next year, especially just even trying to figure out where the kids have left off, where we're gonna need to start, all of that. And so it would be a savings of the 40% part of the 100%. Um, so it's not that we're eliminating classroom position, we're sort of breaking it up a little bit. And then my, my thought would be next spring to reconsider, see where we are, see what's happened with our mode of instruction next year, given, you know, the coronavirus and all that. Um, and then look at restaffing that position, you know, at the full-time classroom level, or looking at a full-time special ed teacher if the inclusion and co-teaching model has worked, because it's very hard also to find special ed teachers, and so that's like another way we could look at it. So, I don't know if that was succinct enough or more confusing, but I guess, um, that's sort of a broad overview. And if there's any questions or anything that I can clarify, let me know.
So, again, I think if, Amy, with your permission, if, if, if it pleases the school committee, I don't think you have to take action on it today. Maybe provide the written piece of what Haley just gave an overview of to the school committee and include it in the minutes and get, get any feedback or any follow-up questions. And then I would say next month, you know, we, we still have a window. But again, I, I just wanna emphasize, I'm completely supportive as long as there are supports built in, should this not work, but I believe it can. And the, the greatest capacity for it to be successful is the support that we have from our, our staff, our parents, our board certainly, and the fact that this came from, from Haley. So, she's the architect and I think knows, knows where the balance is. That would be my recommendation, and then come back next month if you wanna take any formal action.
All right, well, I mean, I've read through Haley's proposal, and I, I think it's really well thought out and with all of the, you know, just uncertainty this year, I think it, it makes a lot of sense and it uses a lot of the resources that we already have in place. Um, so, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm welcome feedback from Carrie or, or, you know, Darlene. I mean, we've had this email and we've had a chance to look it over. Um, it's, it's hard to know what we should do, really, with so much unknown. Um, but I would, you know, I think it, it looks great. I, and as long as Haley's sure she's, you know, up to it and everything, I would, I would recommend, I would support it. Um, but I'm, I'm, I'm okay with, you know, waiting another month and.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'd love to hear Carrie's feedback too. And, and it is funny, when I was working on the schedule, you know, the half-days are very inefficient for me because I spend a lot of time traveling. And so having four full days with, with an hour for lunch, and there's a lot of time built in, working directly, you know, with all the students, is going to make communication even easier. There's a lot of things that being, you know, a full teaching principal, and I've talked a lot with Crystal about it as well, there's a lot of benefits because you're right in there and you're there for any behavior support, you're there for any surprises, you're there for any questions. And something that's hard when I'm coming and going a lot is the staff, you know, likes having me there, basically. Um, it's easier. And so, again, I, not necessarily a forever thing, but for one year, given all the, all that's going on, you know, to me, it does make sense, and I think I can get a lot done, being there all day. Um, having those planning times, having the shared planning time with the teachers during specials. Um, the schedule really flows nicely, so I'm excited about how that looks. Um, so, yeah, but definitely I will be very cognizant of my time and my responsibilities. And the last thing I would wanna do is sell anyone short, you know, in terms of what I'm able to offer.
I think that it was really, I think you put a lot of time and effort into the proposal, and I think it shows. Um, I know that when I printed it out to go over it, I just was very impressed by a lot of it. And I think because we are such a small school community, that thinking kind of outside of the box and utilizing things that we already have in place, um, and, and some cost savings, that's all, it's all a win-win-win situation. And we are going into a fall where there is a lot of uncertainty. Um, you know, and we're very blessed in this community to have two running schools, to have, you know, a, a good team of educators. So, I think, I think that changing school dynamics sometimes is good, not only for teachers, but also for the children, because I think that because our kids go to school for so many years out here, there can become staleness, which is why I like the, the going back and forth between the two islands, because I think it breaks things up for kids. But I think your proposal is a really good one. The only thing that I might even remotely suggest or throw into the, um, into the discussion is that I really wish that we had kept the assistant to you for principal in. Because then that would be somebody that could, in essence, just return phone calls, and it just gave you, it would give you that one little piece of not having to do the phone calls, not do this, not do that. But, um, but even, even with that position not being there, I still think that with the possibility of the number of the kids we'll have in the fall, what the school might look like, what we might be doing, I think this is a really good option. I think it's a really good, solid suggestion, and I, I support it.
And I had invited Julie here, you know her, she's a curriculum director. She reviewed the proposal with me as well, because again, I'm very conscious, like I want what's best, especially for these middle schoolers, I want to give them just like a really fabulous, rich, rigorous year next year. And so I wanted to make sure that she had a chance to look over it, that we talked about programs and curriculum and my schedule and make sure that it all made sense. So, she said that she would come to the meeting too if there were any questions about the curriculum instruction piece or, you know, her thoughts on it. She's happy to participate in the conversation, if that's helpful.
Before anyone speaks, oh, sorry, before anyone speaks, I do think that the middle school is the one part of our education that does seem to get the most parent complaints when parents are communicating. These are not complaints that are ever gonna go to a school board, these are not complaints that are ever gonna go to the superintendent's office, or even the principal maybe. But when moms are talking to moms, there is always that underlying tone of my kid is just so unhappy in middle school. They feel like they're being taught down to, or they feel like they're doing things that are for the youngers. And so it would be nice to kinda see something like middle-school-esque happening for the kids. I, I, I felt like this year, the beginning of the school year, there was a lot of positive changes happening, which might have upset some, from some folks. But it was a lot of things that were happening that kids had kept asking for, but maybe they weren't ready for type of thing. But I, I do think that we do have this unique situation where we do educate K through 8. And so, having some pieces that are just for that, 6 through 8 is kind of a neat idea. Okay, I'm done talking. I'm saying hi to him.
Thank you, Carrie. Julie, did you have anything, yeah, to add?
I just would echo what you've said about the pros and just add two very short things. One, because of the opportunity, but also because the particular personnel. I mean, I think you have a package in Haley that you don't often have or always have. And so, um, I think it's a very island thing to design things in a way that is gonna make sense for you. And, um, so I'm glad to know that there's a positive feeling about considering the proposal, because I do think it's gonna be really good for cohesiveness and for kids. It's also gonna be good for your parent community to feel like they have more access to Haley. And I just think it's an opportunity to, to bring things more together. One of the concerns I've had about the curriculum, and people have done a great job, and I'm not, this is not a pejorative statement. But there's this tension out on the islands between wanting it to look the same like school, like everywhere else, and then wanting it to look totally different because it's the island. And I really think, and have supported in different places in different ways, we need to use the resources and the opportunities that, that being part of a larger district give you, but we need to mix it in a way that is gonna work for your kids, your schedule, your families, and on the island. And Haley and I have had a lot of discussions about curriculum, and there's been some moves that she's wanted to take that she hasn't been able to take because of the differences in what's happening with personnel. I think this would give the opportunity to create some of those models that she could then coach going forward if somebody comes into the school. So, I see it as sort of a, it's a great win-win, like you were saying earlier, for next year as a solution, but it also allows you to set things up really positively going forward.
Thank you. Um, okay, um, so the, as far as a staff, staffing proposal, any more discussion from anybody?
It just, um, Amy, it, it doesn't require a vote. I mean, I just wanna be respectful and make sure the school committee's comfortable. So, again, we can revisit this, but if the school committee, what I'm sensing is, we have permission to at least continue to move forward, but if there's any concerns, we'll revisit this. Is that correct?
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay.
Um, so, right now, I'm feeling sensitive to, certain people have to do something at 10 o'clock, so. Um.
Amy means Carrie has to go to work.
No.
I'm moving.
But Mark has, has said he has something too. So, I just didn't know if you wanted to.
I would at least like to have the board consider the action items. And we can, I, I would just say, with regard to transportation and the teacher apartment rental, I think we could follow up with some, some correspondence between the emails, with email. But I, before we go, I would appreciate at least consideration of the action items. It is important to get that done.
Thank you, Mark.
Haley? Sorry to interrupt, I just got a text that we're not streaming.
Okay, so, yeah, Josh alerted, but we are recording, I wanna be clear. We're recording and I'm working with Josh on that, we had a technical issue, so we'll be able to.
Someone was trying to watch, okay.
Yeah, and it's, it's a technical difficulty that Josh is working through. But if you look at the upcoming corner, we're recording, so we're, we're, we're legal and, um.
Okay.
We, we are working on it.
Okay, um, so the, so, as far as today, should we try to, um, just, um.
I think the next few items, Amy, could go quickly.
Huh?
I think the next few items, action items, could go quickly unless the board has questions. But we got two options, if, if we end, we really need to come back really soon. We, these Title I and Title II fund applications are very important, as are the other items. So, I, I don't wanna push you, but if, if we could run through those, that would be incredibly helpful.
Okay, yeah, I, I definitely think we wanna do those.
Okay.
So, let's move to action items at this time.
Okay, the first is a recommendation to extend the contract of our teaching principal, Haley Fenton. My recommendation to the board would be to extend her contract for one year as a final year of probationary status for the 2020-2021 school year at a salary per the approved fiscal year 21 Cranberry Isle School Department budget.
Okay, I would like to make that motion.
I second it.
Okay. Yay, any discussion of the motion? Okay, all in favor? Carrie?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you very much, congratulations Haley, we're very blessed to have you. The next item, Madam Chair, if I may, is the authorization for the superintendent to hire during the summer months. That is, I, I'm using the term "housekeeping item", we do that each year, and I wanna make sure the public knows that even though I may be in a position to hire during the summer months, we're gonna continue to meet during the summer, and that is always subject to the final approval of the school committee.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the superintendent to hire during the summer months.
I second.
Any discussion of the motion? All in favor? Carrie?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you. The next item is an authorization for the superintendent to apply for, receive state and federal funds. I can't do that without board approval, we do that each year, and that, those are funds that Dr. Meltzer manages overseas, very important to the school, and that's an annual item as well for school committee consideration.
I would like to make that motion.
I second.
Okay, any discussion of the motion?
No.
Okay, all in favor? Carrie?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
The next item is, is somewhat attached to that, and that is for the Cranberry Isles to participate in a consolidated application. This is a good thing, as you well know, we normally do things 11 times in our, in our ALS, and this is something where we can work together as a unit and do one application. Bar Harbor serves as the fiscal agent, the only reason for that is they're the first one in the alphabet, and no funds that Cranberry Isle is eligible for go to Bar Harbor, they all come to the Cranberry Isles.
I just wanna say, these consolidated funds are primarily in reference to the cranberries used for teacher professional development access, and then combined with REIT funds for enrichment. Um, those kinds of things that do benefit both the staff and kids of the Cranberry Isles.
Okay, so I would like to make that motion.
I second.
Any discussion of the motion? Okay, all in favor? Carrie?
Aye.
I vote aye, so approved.
Thank you. Next item is appointment of truance officer, truant officer, attendance officer, school physician. Uh, I'd like to nominate or recommend that Haley be appointed as a truancy officer, attendance officer. Haley, I don't have that name in front of me for school physician. Do you happen to have that there? Or do you know who you, who you're presently using? Or I know we're working through the health clinic.
Yeah, I just put, I think it's Mark Candage.
Okay. So then my recommendation would be for Haley for attendance and truancy officer and Dr. Mark Candage for school physician, please.
I would like to make that motion for the appointment of the truancy officer, attendance officer, being Haley Fenton and the school physician being Mark Candage.
I second.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
All in favor? Carrie? I vote aye.
And the final item is, uh, transfer to reserves. And this is from our business manager, Nancy Thurlow. If it pleases the board, I'll, I'll read the recommendations. Um, and if, if you'd like, you can break them out or you can vote on us as a slate if you'd like. The first recommendation is towards the special education reserve. And the recommendation would be to move to transfer $3,500 to the emergency special education reserve as directed in the 2019-20 budget. The second recommendation is to transfer up to $25,000 to the tuition reserve account as directed in the 2019-20, uh, budget. And the third recommendation is to transfer $2,000 to the maintenance reserve account, uh, for the Cranberry Isles as directed in the 2019-20 budget.
I would like to move those as recommended, um, those transfers as recommended by Ms., uh, Dr. Gauss. Can I get a second?
I second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Um, just, oh, I'm sorry.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Carrie says aye. I vote yes. So moved.
Madam Chair, just in recognition of the time and other business and the fact that we've had a technology issue, I want to apologize to the community, but we are recording. We will upload this. But given that, I think it would be important to come back, uh, to the transportation and other items and the teacher apartment rental to make sure that we can do live streaming without any difficulty of viewers. Uh, with that, I haven't received any, a public comment that I'm aware of, but we will provide it. So those would be my recommendations for future agenda items. And I think we should meet in the first week of July, if it pleases the board to revisit those items or sooner if you'd like.
Um, and I, I, I kind of think the, um, I'd like to get moving on the transportation and the teacher's apartment. Can we, can we maybe meet again in June?
Absolutely. Absolutely. We can do it. As I think if we stay to a Friday, we're fine. But, uh, I'll work with you and Haley. We can do it in a week. We can do it in two weeks. Whatever works best for you.
Okay. What do you think Haley? Do you think we can wait a couple of weeks on these two items?
Yeah, again, I think, um, you know, I'm a planner, so I like the idea of kind of making a couple of these decisions. Um, but I think in two weeks, if that works for people, a week or two, whatever, I'm, yep, I'm ready to have those discussions whenever you want to meet.
Okay. And we might be able to have Darlene here then too.
That would be nice.
Okay. So Carrie, what do you think? Are you okay?
Well, if there's somebody that wants to get into that apartment, I mean, should we be waiting? I mean, if there's somebody that's trying to rent it, is two weeks gonna kerfuffle something? Um, I mean, I definitely, I mean, obviously I have to, I'm going to work as we speak, but, um, I just, if there's something that needs, needs to be discussed, I, I, I kind of hear reservation in Haley's voice that if things have to be, um, yeah.
Okay, so, um, can we just, is there any action, anything we need to do in order to go forward with renting the teacher's apartment? Haley, Haley, you're muted.
Sorry, I was talking to Fiona.
I guess it depends on the, um, on the staffing proposal.
Right. That's why, if everything lines up, you know, then that apartment can be rented whenever. I mean, I don't know, Mark would know if we need to, like how frequently that happens.
I, I, I think that, um, unless I'm wrong, if it pleases the board, we can work, Haley and I on that. It's not necessarily anything that the board has taken action on. Uh, it's been left, um, to administration to oversee. I know Haley's worked on a, uh, lease agreement. So we can move forward with that and just present the information to the board. And that does need to be helpful.
Okay. All right. So what do you say we schedule the next meeting for June 19th, which is two weeks from now, at nine o'clock? Sound good? Or should we go early? Or should we go eight, 8:30?
Whatever the board would like to do. Um, and Haley, I'm, I'm fine. I'll, I'll just.
Let's try, let's try eight o'clock.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So June 19th at eight o'clock. And, um, thank you, everybody. Okay, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second? Yes?
I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much. Congratulations Haley. Great job. Have a lovely weekend, guys. Stay safe. Look forward to seeing you in person, hopefully soon. Bye.
Okay, thanks.